Tonight we stand for Alice Camella, a district clerk from 1976 through 1991, who passed away on June 10th, 2018. Thank you, everyone. So, welcome again to the Board of Education meeting. We're excited to be here in this brand-new facility, really a facility that's been decades in the making. Former boards of education, superintendents, transportation supervisors have envisioned a facility like this that would free up parking, ease our logistics, and create a more cost-efficient transportation system for our district and the students that we serve. So with that, we'll move on to 4.0 presentations, and we have the gentleman from Young and Right Architectural here tonight to lead us through a presentation.
Evening, everybody. My name is Steve Sharowski with Young and Right Architectural, part of the design team that helped put this whole facility together here. Very happy to be here tonight, be able to present this to you all and talk about, a little bit about the facility, and then share what we're kind of moving forward with and working from here on out. We put together a few boards here at the back, encourage everybody to take a look at them either on their way out or later in the evening, sort of telling the story of this facility and where it really came from. Mr. Uthe was entirely correct, this is a facility that's years in the making and the vision of it goes well into the past. The plot of land was actually purchased by the district back in the 1950s and has been in the district's possession since that time. And as you all know and are very familiar with, the Lancaster High School site is incredibly cramped, you know, and getting the buses away from that site was a huge priority. The ability to have a new facility that would be safer for the occupants, safer for the students, safer for the bus drivers, and would allow for the upkeep of buses and a fleet of 120-plus or 100-plus buses in the 21st century was absolutely pivotal moving forward. After the referendum vote in 2015, started design and then construction last year in April, so in just over a year, the construction crew and the construction managers at Buffalo Construction, Joe's somewhere around here, he should get some credit for this, he sort of led the way with their team and a good group of contractors in just over a year taking a 25-acre site from relatively undeveloped farmland to what you're seeing here today, which is a pretty good turnaround in terms of the construction industry. We have a facility here that's just over 19,000 square feet, so significantly larger than the existing facility on Pleasant View. There's eight bays with three in-ground lifts, a wash bay for maintenance and upkeep of the vehicles, storage for all the parts and pieces that are needed. This side of the facility, as you've seen when you've come in, is dedicated to dispatch and office space. This room in particular is a break room, conference room, meeting room for the drivers for training and for daily use. Just behind me, on the other side of this wall, is the office area that's focused on dispatch, routing, keeping students safe, making sure everything happens on time and safely from a day-to-day operations. The two halves of the building are separated functionally and for safety reasons. One of the conflicts on the old site was an issue where all the bus drivers had to walk past the bus bays to get to their buses on a daily basis. Nothing really ever happened, but it was a recipe for something to happen somewhere down the line. Here, the drivers are able to walk into the facility, check in, walk down this corridor and go out to their buses without ever having to cross the maintenance shops, ever having to cross where the work is going on. So it kind of allows for the two halves to function without impeding each other, so to speak. But that has all come to fruition here. We hope everybody's happy with it. From what we understand, the district should be moving in in the coming weeks to take possession of the facility and use it for many years to come. If you don't mind, I'd like to talk briefly, real quick, about what we're working on moving forward. As we've presented to you in the past, we're in the process of the 2015 referendum project. Work ongoing is continuing at the high school. The north gym is coming near to completion. I hope everyone's got a chance to see that as it's coming together. A lot of construction on the site, so I know we, the construction managers and the contractors, all appreciate everybody's patience with those ongoing operations and the facilities coming together very nicely moving forward. That work will transition to continuing work throughout the fall and spring and into next summer. Continued work at the high school for what many of you may remember, the Black Box Theater, library renovations, work at the middle school and elementary schools throughout the district. So there's still a lot coming and a lot moving forward, but a lot has already happened and we're starting to see the pieces of that 2015 project actually come about two and three years down the road after things got underway originally. Would you like me to speak a little bit about the work in the future here? We're talking about moving forward? We can tour, yeah. Take everybody around. All right. [inaudible] But whether you're the existing facility, which has four bays and some storage with one lift, two lifts, one didn't function so well. This facility here, which this portion of it is just over 12,000 or 10,000 square feet, you're standing on a 10-inch-thick concrete slab specifically meant to hold away the buses. We have in-ground lifts behind us. The facility was designed so that buses could pull in from both the front and the back, so you could have maintenance operations happening on both sides at once. It would allow buses coming back from their routes to come in if something went wrong, or pull in in the morning if they find something wrong when they're getting on the bus in the morning, and then be able to drive them straight through to go out for their routes during the day if needed. We have a full system of fluids and supplies that allows for the workers to operate on a daily basis. You see a lot of hoses hanging here. These are for oil, transmission fluid, windshield washer fluid, exhaust air, compressed air, power hose reels throughout the bank to eliminate trimming hazards, eliminate cords being spread all over the facility. It really is sort of a state-of-the-art new facility here. Floor is actually heated by radiant hot water, helps dry spills, helps keep the floor freezing over, especially with doors, which might have the doors open for extended periods of time when moving buses in and out. This will help temper the environment, keep it warm in here for longer. Behind us, through the dark door, is an additional bay. That's the wash facility for Lancaster. It's a standalone bay, so that the buses can be washed without getting anything else wet, getting equipment wet, getting other buses wet. All the drainage here is protected and separated from the environment with the waste oil separated, so there won't be any contamination to the local watershed areas. You notice when you came in, there's three what look like lakes in the front. That's actually a D E C requirement now for all the stormwater on the site, every raindrop that falls on the parking lot is treated onsite and filtered there before it's released back into the municipal system. New requirement now, but it keeps the environment safer for longer, and is definitely something that is a need to include in the facility of this size.
When you cross that hallway, you came on the mechanic side, so the mechanics bathrooms are there, car storage is there, pet mechanics office, computers and controls are down under there, and then there's storage mechanical at the upper level. So all this is the mechanics world. The other side that we left is the bus drivers, and it separates them. There's separate toilets over there, there's a separate workroom, it's a face. So this was designed for that flow that Steve talked about separating mechanics and bus. Yeah? Walk everyone through the other. We took a little. Brilliant?
Okay, thank you once again to Steve from Young and Right and Joe from Buffalo Construction for that tour and all the information. 5.0 is correspondence. We received an email on June 1st, 2018 from Dr. Victor Kilchik concerning air quality near Hillview Elementary. We'll be pursuing that inquiry and corresponding with him in the future. 6.0 is approval of minutes. 6.1, could I have a motion to accept regular session minutes from June 4th, 2018?
[inaudible]
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 7.0 is items from staff organization. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association? Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
First of all, let's say congratulations on this facility. It's very nice to see a lot of time, effort, planning, and commitment from the community to get this done, so we really appreciate it. It's a wonderful addition to the district. We'd also like to thank Mrs. Chris, her and Mrs. Chris for your service to the board from the students of Lancaster. And finally, let's recognize Dr. Perrine for her hard work and her dedication to students in this beautiful Lancaster.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsh and Mrs. Cole. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Okay. 8.0 is board reports. 8.1 is board reports. Does anyone from the board have anything they'd like to report on?
I just wanted to mention that I was in attendance for the Erie County Association of School Boards dinner for Mrs. Christopher. She received an award, Diana Miller Award, for her efforts. So I just wanted to again recognize her and congratulate her. It was a wonderful evening, and I was glad we could be together to, you know, I could support her for that. It was kind of a shame that none of you guys were there. It was a really nice evening. They had a lot of support, all the other school superintendents, and it was just a really nice evening. So again, congratulations. Thank you for everything that you've done. Well deserved. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to report on? Okay, before moving on, I would like to just mention that I was able to attend Dr. Perrine's celebration. I know that she wasn't crazy about it in the courtyard because of her very humble nature, but I, again, would like to recognize her 10 years of service to Lancaster and her 30-plus years to education. So thank you, Dr. Perrine. It was a very nice occasion. Thank you to all who attended and participated. 8.2 is our district wellness update from one of our trustees, Mrs. Metz.
Yes, this was in the Word Packet, so I think everybody's read it. We're all pretty well-versed on what a good job the food service department and the phys ed department does in meeting all the mandates and healthy options and how many minutes a week and everything else that these kids need. But there's some other things that I just wanted to point out that kind of stuck out to me. In the elementary schools, we'd like to promote healthy snacks or even non-food items. No food-for-reward system. We, you know, to offer alternative for parties, pizza parties, birthday parties, to encourage healthier or non-food, and, you know, we've got some ideas on non-food items for younger kids in here. And to keep encouraging that before intermurals and the after-school activities are offered, which are fantastic, the walk-a-thons, the jump rope-a-thons, bike rides, the William Street triathlon is a fantastic event. The high school, you know, the fundraisers, they'd like to sell, you know, their candy bars. After-school hours would be great. There'll be no pizza deliveries to students at the high school, which I think is a good idea. And encourage the high school students, who are so busy, to use the grab-and-go food carts. They have healthy options there. If they can't get to lunch, they're too busy. I think those are all really great ideas. And there's a lot of other things in here, but it's just a good plan to improve the nutrition education, the choices, and to increase the physical activity of students before, during, and after school, at home, in school, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Metz. 8.3 is a review of our 2017-18 board goals and district goals, and I'd like to go through some of this information. The Board of Education set goals separate from district goals this year, which was something a little bit different, but puts a finer point on what the role of a Board of Education is, I think. Our first set of goals was attend district activities as best we can, sports, music meetings with local officials, district meetings, and other events when invited. Enhance Board of Education's members' knowledge of current issues in New York State education throughout professional development. That includes attending the NISBA convention, local workshops, perhaps workshops run by one of our attorneys, the Harris Beach. And then lastly, to seek out a service project as a team. And we did have a presentation to the Board of Education on District Data and Programs in April. Many of us attended the NISBA convention. We were continuously updated by Mrs. Christopher on the meetings she attended in Albany, as well as her giving us more specific information as to points of advocacy that came from the Erie County Association of School Boards, so I thank her for that. As far as seeking out a service project, that was something that we had very good intentions of doing, and we had a couple ideas at the end there, and some of us were able to attend the village cleanup, but we did have a very difficult weekend that time in the district, so that's something I would like to re-up and put on our district, our Board of Education goals for next year. As far as advocacy goes, monitor politics and legislation at state and federal levels and influence them when appropriate, if possible. And that, again, falls mostly to Mrs. Christopher, who was able to carry out those duties for us, and I hope that we would have someone take on that legislative committee and continue her work. As far as the budget goes, our goal was to continue to oversee the creation of a fiscally responsible budget that upholds the mission and values of the school community while maintaining the integrity of district programs, services, and the financial condition. And throughout this 18-19 process, over the course of the past few months, the Board reviewed each section of the budget thoroughly, including proposals for new programs, adjustments to staff levels, operational needs. We developed a final draft that maintains existing programs and services, prioritizes enhanced safety and security initiatives, and meets the existing and additional needs of a district in a cost-effective way. The budget falls below the maximum property tax limit by $800,000 and estimates a 1.71 tax rate increase to taxpayers, a $29 increase for a $100,000 household. As far as facilities go, we had a goal to support the development of a new capital improvement proposition based on the needs identified in the building condition survey and the 20-year anniversary of the William Street School construction. In this past year, the Board approved pre-refund work agreements with the architects and construction managers on February 12th, 2018. The district administrators have been working with the architects and construction managers to draft a project scope that addresses many of the district's needs noted in the 2015 Building Condition Survey. Meetings have been held with building principals and custodial staff to identify specific building-level instructional needs. Finalization of the scope and presentation to the Board has been purposefully delayed while the district awaits the results of the SES enrollment study, so the project can possibly include any work needed to be done to suit a recommendation that the district is going to undertake as we look to the future. And then lastly, we had a goal to arrange to tour the district facilities as a group to view construction progress and conditions in need of improvement, and we achieved a portion of that this evening with a tour and an explanation of this completed project. And then we hope to have a tour in the fall to view the new Java Gym, Phase 6 construction, and hopefully also a completed Phase 7 construction. And this tour will be coupled with a preview of areas in our new capital project. So quite an extensive year of work, and again, that's separate from our district goals, which I'd like to go through at this time as quickly as I can, but for posterity's sake, those that are watching on the website, I'd like to review some of this information. The district goals, board policy and board presentations, review, revise, and update the district code of conduct for Board of Education approval, and we reviewed and accepted that on January 5th, 2018 with a presentation. Update the community to the present state of NICE Ed, ESSA reform agenda, the opt-out movement, and the region's assessment revisions. We had a presentation to the Board of Education on September 18th called Career Development and Occupational Studies by John Armstrong and Mike Candela. We also had a presentation to the Board of Education on April 17th, Student Achievement Beyond Business First. Another goal we had, review K-12 school boundaries and communicate data, results, and recommendations to the community and to the Board of Education for consideration, and that really falls to our current SES study. And that initial report was presented to the Board of Education on January 2018. The final report was submitted in May of 2018, and just this past Saturday, we had our community forum, and that information was relayed to stakeholders within our community. A district goal for student achievement, support the increased student achievement and success for all students pre-K to 12, including the expansion of opportunities in STEM studies, alternative programs, and educational technology. Number one, we have a Trades Academy programming that began in September of 2017. We have full saturation of Chromebooks available to students, over 6,070 of those. Full saturations of iPads for kindergarten students by the spring of 2018. Keyboarding without tiers for all Grade 2 and 3 students. Our Z-Space, which we had a demonstration of, expansion throughout the district with particular focus in high school science. We have our Foundations for Success, which is a two-year program required for freshmen. Our AP coursework has expanded to five additional courses in the past five years, including AP Computer Science, AP Psychology, AP Art, with AP French beginning in fall of 2018, with 875 students currently taking AP courses. NGSS curriculum development and expansion of Project Lead the Way to include Grade 4 and 5. We have 40 tech experts, who are high school students, assisting throughout the district with technology. We have a planned opening of a Lancaster Alternative Program in September of 2018. We read 180, a Read 180 program expanded to William Street, the iRead program at Court Street for special education students, and then we have Inspired Learning Classrooms, 40-plus across the district with innovative technology applications and creative learning spaces. Playworks, which is a presentation done to the Board of Education on November 7th, 2017, involved Court Street teachers. Next, to continue the exploration and establishment of alternative school for Lancaster students, and that planning continues, and that planned opening in September 2018, and hiring and curriculum development in spring and summer 2018. We had a goal to pursue the New York State Career Technical Education endorsement for L. Lancaster Central School District Academies of Health Careers, Trades, Project Lead the Way, and Finance, and those applications are being completed for the AOF and business courses for submission in June 2018 for NICE Ed approval. Health and safety goals, assess the progress of the new 2016 allergy policy and administrative regulations, and continue to make adjustments based on student needs. The policy was reviewed by the committee on May 16th, 2018 with the following actions: Coaches from outside the district will receive GCN allergy training. A process will be developed to advise coaches and advisors of allergies and food restrictions of our students. Building use forms will contain an allergy advisement for groups using our district facilities, and subfolders will contain advisements regarding allergy-free rooms. Under Finance and Operations, the district set a goal to assist in moving a 2018 bond issue forward from inception through community approval, factoring in Building Condition Survey, or the five-year plan associated with such. The Board approved a pre-refund work agreements with the architects and construction managers, again, on February 12th, 2018, and the district administrators have been working with the architects and construction managers to draft the project scope that addresses many of the district's needs, again, based upon the 2015 building survey. Move Phase 7 and Phase 8 of the 2015 57.3 million bond issue forward from planning to design to start of construction. And Phase 5, the Walden Avenue Bus Garage, which you're sitting in, was completed this June. Most of Phase 6, Hillview and the high school, is complete. The Java Gym portion of Phase 6 construction is underway and is slated for an on-time September 2018 opening. Phase 7 continues to sit at NICE Ed, waiting for approval, and summer 2018 construction is possibly jeopardized or delayed as a result of those applications sitting at NICE Ed. Several meetings with principals and essential personnel regarding designs and specifications for the Phase 7 and Phase 8 scopes have been held, and bi-weekly meetings and daily communication with the architects and construction managers occur. And then lastly, the district set a goal to implement Chapter 514 of the laws of 2016, increasing transparency in school district operations, including additional reserve fund information on the annual property tax report card, board authorization for payments out of and transfers into reserve funds, and posting of various financial documents on the district website. The Board held a reserve fund work session on October 23rd, 2017, at which the district's funds, balance, and reserve plan was thoroughly reviewed. The Board unanimously adopted the plan on November 6th, 2017. The plan is posted to the district website along with a video recording of the work session. Additional reserve fund information is provided on the 2018 annual property tax report card as required by New York State and accepted by the Board on April 17. The Board approves transfers in and out of reserve funds on an annual basis. All documents required by this legislation to be posted on the district website are posted and available to the public, and the district's most recent internal and external audits and corrective action plan, the most recent audit and corrective plan, the most recent multi-year financial plan, the current school year's budget, and the district reserved and fund balance plan mentioned above. So some aggressive goals from the district, and we expect really nothing less, and have come to expect nothing less, than really striving to achieve those goals and more specific goals to the Board of Education, which we hope to continue on into the future. 8.4, we have our service awards, and at this time, we would like to recognize and congratulate Mrs. Christopher and Mrs. Dipczynski for their service to our school district students and our community, and we wish them well in the future. We'd like to present them with... And I myself have not been able to see those. Would either of you like to open those at that time, at this time? Pardon me?
I'm gonna open the first if you did. Here you go. He's in there. Is it, gotta buy something.
If you don't want to, it's fine. Very nice.
Thank you.
9.0 is our superintendent's administrative report. Dr. Valen?
At this time of year, it's really difficult to just talk about a few, because there's so many great things, and every single night it seems like there's at least six or seven events. But I did write down five or six that I wanted to just highlight. But I did write down five or six that I wanted to just highlight. Leap graduation, celebrating graduation with students and parents who never thought they would make it and actually graduate is always special. Nine students graduated from the LEAP program, recovering 125-plus credits. Congratulations to the students and the teachers who never gave up on them, who pushed them and now share their success. Unified basketball, the regional tournament was held in Lancaster last week. The high school was buzzing with games taking place throughout every available facility. These games give us all an opportunity to smile and laugh. And the joy the players have for the game and for this opportunity is infectious. Editorial cartoons, Mr. Miller is here, I saw him, there he is, right there, great. Glad to have you, didn't know you were showing up, and so now you're here, Mr. Miller. Illustration and cartooning class, have won awards in the past and again this year. This year's Buffalo Evening, Buffalo News editorial cartoon contest. And sophomore Grace Piursa won first place for her work about various things children with cell phones are exposed to at an early age. And junior Marie Rose Annabelle won second place for her work around the theme, "The Demise of Toys R Us." So congratulations to Mr. Miller and all of his students. But that's now a yearly event with those awards and everything else, and congratulations to you and all your young people. Triathlon, the largest elementary school triathlon in the United States. Could not be possible without the teachers. Last year I mentioned a couple of teachers and I forgot them and they got mad at me, so I'm not going to mention any. I will just walk this thing and shake their hands personally. But a lot of teachers involved in that, that's run by the Physical Education Department, who have really spearheaded that since day one. And so that does not happen without a lot of teachers, administrators, parents, volunteers, and you know, real, the whole community coming together. So thank you so much to all of them. This was another successful year and it continues to get better and better each year. Saturday's SES focus group was one of the final steps in the district's enrollment study, and that took place this past Saturday. Community discussion groups deeply considered and discussed the aspects of the study and rank order the scenarios, considering the best options. A final report will be going to the Board of Education soon, and together we will move toward a decision-making phase to prepare other facets the Board of Education vision. For example, architects, financial considerations for the capital project, paying for it, bond issues, capital projects and votes, et cetera, et cetera. And finally, Flag Day ceremonies. Flag Day ceremonies honoring America and the flag were held throughout the district this week. Songs were sung, stories were read, and America's history was recounted as students celebrated this great country. And for a woman who does not like being the center of attention and does not like parties and she's closing her eyes. I won't be long-winded, she's had enough parties and things like that, but Marie, you've done an unbelievable, unbelievably fantastic job and I'm going to miss you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Vallee. Ten point O is old business. Does anyone have any old business they'd like to discuss? Eleven point O is new business, eleven point one, personnel items. Eleven point one point one, could I have a motion to accept the superintendent's employment contract? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Eleven point one point two, could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Eleven point two are education items. Eleven point two point one, could I have a motion to accept the committee on special educations report? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Eleven point two point two, could I have a motion to accept the committee on preschool special educations report? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point O are business and financial items. Twelve point one, could I have a motion to accept the financial items? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point two, twelve point three and twelve point four are first policy readings for 8240, instruction in certain subjects. 6212, certification and qualifications. And 7242, military recruiters and institutions of higher learning, which has to do with their ability to seek out information on students applying. Those are for information only and will be voted on at a future meeting. Next, twelve point five, the bond and bail sale results is for information only. And that has to do with the interest rates that we get for bonds that we have put out for sale. Twelve point six, could I have a motion to accept the surplus equipment award or report? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point seven is surplus and sale of buses. Could I have a motion to accept that report? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point eight is surplus textbooks. Could I have a motion to accept that report? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point nine is construction change orders. And Mr. Armini is here to answer any questions. Could I have a motion to accept that report? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point 10 is a bid award for Phase 7B, which is high school. Could I have a motion to accept that bid award? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point 11 and twelve point 12 are both bid awards, summer transportation, 2018-19 school year transportation. And I'm going to ask Mrs. Phillips to elaborate on those two if you could, Mrs. Phillips?
Sure can. Every, at least every year, but we can also extend for five years. We have bus contracts with a local company who transports some of our students with disabilities where it is not feasible for us to do so. So typically, students with disabilities are attending placements outside of the school district. We have a contract for summertime and then we have a contract for the school year. And our school year contract last year was the fifth, or it's current year was the fifth year, so we had to put that back out to bid. And they also indicated that they would not be interested in extending the contract we had for the summertime because it was not cost-effective to them. So we put out bids. We received two bids, our current company and another company. And the pricing has increased drastically. But that has been the phenomenon across Western New York and across the state over the last few years. So we've actually been lucky that it's just hitting us now as opposed to a couple of years ago. So you see the twelve point 11 and twelve point 12 are for the bid awards. And then later on, you will see twelve point 16 and twelve point 17 is to approve the contracts that are affiliated with those bid awards. What we will be doing to mitigate the cost, we have budgeted for some increase, expecting that that was going to happen. We will also be looking to transport as many students as possible with our own fleet and our own drivers. As you know, bus drivers, shortage is a real thing. So we will do the best that we can and we will be having Western New York bus transport the students that are just, you know, where there's a single student going to a placement far away. If there's any opportunities where there's maybe, you know, multiple students going to the same place, that would be more feasible for us to do. We also received state aid back in the following year on all of these expenditures at our aid ratio. So a big portion of this, these expenses will be recovered in the following year.
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. So if I may, I'd like to put 12 11 and 12 12 together. Any other questions or comments? Could I have a motion to accept those bid awards? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point 13 is a contract with the YMCA of Buffalo Niagara, that's an annual contract. Could I have a motion to accept that contract? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point 14 is a contract with Crisis Prevention Institute, and that's for training for three special ed teachers in the district. Could I have a motion to accept that contract? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point 15 is a contract with Buffalo Hearing and Speech Services. Could I have a motion to accept that contract? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve 16, 17 and 18 are contracts for student transport and partial transportation for summer and 2018-19. If I may, could I have a motion to accept those contracts as a bundle, I guess you could say? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve 19 is a contract with Compensation Consulting Services, which is, they're doing a workman's comp, which saves us money at consulting services. Could I have a motion to accept that contract? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve 20 is a contract with Orin Hava, which has to do with special education. Could I have a motion to accept that contract? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point 21 is the employee benefit accrued liability reserve transfers. And that has to do with retirements and the corresponding health insurance. Could I have a motion to accept that, those transfers? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point 22 is part of the food service program. We have a meal shaming plan, which I again like to defer to Mrs. Phillips. If you could elaborate on that a little bit about what that is and what that means to our students?
Sure. In the 2018-19 state budget, a prohibition against meal shaming was passed. And it requires all districts to, number one, have a plan that prohibits meal shaming. Number two, have a plan and follow certain procedures for trying to collect money from families who have not, whose students have negative accounts. And also to offer them at least twice throughout the school year on top of the original application, the free and reduced lunch application in case perhaps they qualify. Basically, our charge policy as it stands is okay. We aren't, or shouldn't be, at least, or not that I know of. Our policy allows students to charge. We do not give them alternate meals. They're able to take the, you know, the reimbursed meal that they have on their tray. No one is taking meals from them and throwing them away or providing them with a cheese sandwich or anything to that sort. We're not denying meals. So really, what this plan does is just put that into writing, that that's what we're doing. We will be posting it on our website. We will have a, be required to train all of our staff annually on the procedures. We are required to not communicate at all with the students about any money that's owed. And that that communication happens just with home. So we're really not doing much differently than what we're currently doing, but this plan is required. It puts it into writing how we're going to treat this. And it will really just bring some additional training and awareness to our staff this summer and annually before the school year begins.
Thank you again, Mrs. Phillips. Could I have a motion to accept that plan? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve 23 and 12 24 are for information only, but they are the 2018-19 board meeting dates. Please preview those at your leisure and we'll vote on those at a future meeting. And then lastly, Board of Education retreat dates. We have a couple tentative dates that I'd like you to check your calendars for and just keep in mind for the future. The 8th, the 15th and the 22nd of September, and those are all Saturdays, of course. Moving to 13.0, public hearing. Any person who notified the district clerk per Policy 1514 may speak at this time. Speakers must first be recognized and then identify themselves. Their time limit to speak will be five minutes per person. Up first, we have Mrs. Julie Casca.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank three remarkable women here tonight for their service to the entire Lancaster Central School District. Dr. Marie Perrini, you have done so much to foster development in all of our students during your time here in Lancaster. From spearheading the development with others to bring Chromebooks and iPads to our classrooms, to helping bring new curriculum to our students and so much more. Your presence has been a tremendous asset to all of us here in the Lancaster Central School District community. On behalf of myself and my two boys, we thank you and wish you all the best in your future endeavors. You will be greatly missed. I would also like to say thank you to two outgoing board members, Mrs. Brenda Christopher and Mrs. Kelly Dipsinski. It has not been an easy three years for both of you. As both of you are Lancaster High School alum and community members, you have put your heart and souls with countless hours into serving many times, which it's thankless in this volunteer position, while during tumultuous times, a lot of you, not just yourselves, were defamed, demeaned, ridiculed and so much more. And that goes for the entire table, not just the two women I'm thanking for their service tonight, it's everybody. At the end of these three years, you can both hold your heads high. You have spoken from the heart on behalf of the students' families, veterans in our community. Thank you for your selfless service during these tumultuous times. I'm sorry that neither one of you will be here next year when my son graduates to hand him his diploma. I know you both and I know that you'll both continue to serve the community you love so much. I wish you and your families nothing but the best in all the years to come. On a quick side note, I'd again like to thank everybody in this district for all of the support and love you've shown my family and I, and my two boys, one who's a junior and one who's a 2014 grad who just graduated Hilbert with honors, for everything you've done in the last five and a half months on Eastfield Bodie, I'm sorry, with the unexpected loss of my husband. Even till today, it's heartfelt. And no matter who we are, we're all human and in times of need, the district and the community come through. And myself, my older son Brett and my son Jacob, we truly appreciate all the love you've shown. On a final note, I would like to thank Mrs. Lynn Ruda and all the teachers and students who put such hard work into the prom this year. I received a phone call from my son Jacob's mom, his girlfriend's mother, on 9:30 on June 8th, I believe it was, when we had prom. I was to go down to the convention center at 10 o'clock at night and try to find my way there with my mother. My son and his girlfriend were chosen by their peers to be prince and princess of the junior class. With everything we've been through, it was just a highlight that I can't thank the district enough for for allowing parents to go into the prom and to allow us to witness something so beautiful as it was for my family and myself. I thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casca.
Good evening. My name is Dakota Miller. I live at two seventy Aurora Street, Lancaster, New York. Uh, I am here to talk about two amazing Board of Education members, Brenda Christopher and Kelly Dapczynski. Brenda, you've gone to Albany for NISBA meetings almost every month, and instead of board reports, we should call it Brenda Reports, because either you spoke during it or no one spoke at all. Kelly, you've done a great job also while starting up a business in the town, which is a tough thing to do. Keep on doing what you do best.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. With that, we'll go to another Mr. Miller, uh, Brett Miller.
Hi, thank you. Um, my name is Brett Miller. I live at, uh, five-six-three-six Broadway Street in Lancaster. I'm also a, a teacher here at Lancaster High School. Um, there's just a quick line item that just went by real fast. I'm not sure. I, I actually missed it, I'll be honest. I was taking, typing notes when it went by, but, um, it regarded, uh, all sorts of different programs in the school district, and, uh, also specifically mentioned, um, G and T or GT, gifted and talented. Um, and that, this is, uh, an area, as a former, uh, GT student in, um, in Kenmore, and, you know, a teacher in the district and, and, uh, a parent of, uh, three kids in Lancaster, um, I just, uh, kind of feel like it's like one piece that's, that's missing from our district. I know that there's tons of different individual, uh, course offerings that we have from, um, from William Street. I know there's the accelerated math program. I know that there's accelerated science at, uh, at the middle school, and then, of course, just as mentioned tonight, tons of APs at the high school. Um, but the, the GT program, when I was in, uh, Kenmore, it was just, uh, an amazing thing, and it, and it was more than just, you know, a few accelerated courses. It was, uh, a group of students, um, the way they worked it out, and I'm not sure if this is feasible here, or, or even if it's the best idea anymore, but we actually, um, everyone that was part of the program literally just missed a day of school each week. We were bused to, uh, Kenmore East, and we spent a day there with, uh, three different teachers doing various activities. We were in Shakespeare plays and, um, back then, we were learning about how to use a mouse on the computer. Um, but, uh, um, that was big. Uh, so, but anyways, um, what I felt like that program did, uh, that I know is really important, uh, not just in schools, but, but in workplaces and in colleges, is, uh, really fostering creativity and developing that with, with students that, um, really could afford to miss a whole day of school and not, not even miss a step when they went back the next day. Um, and we focused on things like just working with ideas, problem solving, things like that. And I guess, uh, what I'd like to say is really, I'd just like to see a stronger focus on that, maybe, you know, the same, um, obviously, we do a lot of amazing things for our, for our students, uh, that are in the special education program. Uh, I would like to see something maybe like that, where there's, you know, two or three dedicated teachers that are devoted to just, um, finding students that are, that are, uh, exceptional in the various different areas that, uh, that schools offer and, uh, taking, allowing them to go to the next level, basically. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Uh, and lastly, uh, we have Marie McKay this evening.
Marie McKay, fifty-four, Tomahawk Trail. I would like to wish Dr. Perini the best on her, on her next journey in life. I remember back when she first came to Lancaster. She was this quiet person that didn't say much. My last few years on the board, Dr. Perini added humor to her presentations and was funny at times to watch. I have to say, there was only one thing that we didn't agree on. At graduation, she would sit behind me, and I would turn around and I would say to her, "Can't wait to see the beach balls," and she would reply to me, "Mrs. McKay." I would turn around, uh, I'm sorry, if the beach balls became part of the graduation, I would turn around and she would give me that mom look. I still laugh when I think about it. Dr. Perini loves the fine arts, and I believe that is why we have so many great academies today, because of her. I thank you for all the great things you have done for the students in the district. Each year, Dr. Perini would give the board members that were teachers pencils for their classroom. I give you tonight a pencil for your first day of class, and I wish you the best and good luck and stay in. As we end the year and move on to the next year, I have a few things for the board. You have, you have your work cut out for you, making a decision on a problem that has been here for many years, what to do with overcrowding K through three buildings. I only ask that you work as a board of seven. If everyone works together, that will reflect a positive image to the public and the students. To talk to each other and share ideals and be classy and professional as most of you are. When, when questions need to be addressed, look up to your leaders for answers and ask them before meetings, so if it needs to be discussed further, the leadership has the information and the people there to address the issues. Please don't make promises on your own. Remember, that will only cause problems and break down the trust in the communication among all board members. Remember, you were elected by the community to do what is right for all. I'm going to close by saying this quote, whether you're a seasoned professional or in the early stage of your startup, advice from the expert is only one of the best tools to learn from and help fuel your vision. A sound tip, tip can stick with you and help you shape the way you build your business. Thank you. There's a pencil for each child. Love you.
And next, next, thank you, Mrs. McKay. Uh, next on our agenda is, um, a work session, which isn't really a work session, uh, to review board and committee positions. Uh, but first off, I'd like to, uh, just sort of ask a, a question of the board as to what starting time you'd like to have for work sessions in the future, just to think about this, whether it be six, six-thirty, or seven o'clock. Uh, and I know that most of us, uh, probably prefer those later times, um, but just chew on that for a while, and, and we'll make a decision, um, in the coming months. Uh, but as far as committee, uh, positions for our Board of Education, um, which we will, uh, decide upon at our reorg meeting, um, in July, um, first, we have the delegate assembly, and that's the policymaking body of, um, of NISBA and the Erie County Association of School Boards. Each member, district appoints a school board member, alternate, and superintendent to serve, um, and delegates play a key role in advancing, uh, the Erie County Association of School Boards' goals and, and mission. Um, this year, our delegate assembly member was Mr. Jackson. The alternate was Mrs. Metz. On the budget and finance team, which is also a committee position, uh, that team assists with budget development, conducts a regular review of the membership dues structure, and seeks al- alternate, uh, revenue sources. Uh, they meet at least three times a year. That, uh, our representative this year was, uh, Mr. Gallagher with myself as an alternate. Uh, the legislative team links, uh, the Erie County Association of School Boards to lawmakers and to the New York State Board of Regents. They lobby and sponsor activities that support the need for school boards to anticipate trends and present recommendations before legislative issues, uh, escape local influence. Uh, and of course, that was, um, uh, carried out by Mrs. Christopher and Mrs. Dapczynski this year. Uh, within the New York State School Boards Association, uh, we have our voting delegate, um, and that was Mr. Jackson this year. Um, the alternate was Mrs. Christopher. And then the NISBA liaison was Mrs. Christopher as well. Uh, district committees, we have the audit committee, which, uh, featured Mrs. Dapczynski, Mr. Gallagher, and Mr. Jackson. Uh, we have the food service committee, which was myself and Mrs. Metz. The building use committee, Mrs. Christopher and Mrs. Metz. The health insurance committee, Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Sage. And then the district-wide health and safety committee, uh, which was again Mrs. Christopher and, uh, with an alternate of Mrs. Dapczynski. So those committee positions will be, uh, discussed at our reorganization meeting, uh, and I'd like you to consider serving on one or more of those. And also...
You have a deeper tradition, though, in what I've done with delegates and what I've been doing, so...
Yep, thank you for mentioning that. That, that usually is a, um, okay?
Yeah, you said that.
Did you enjoy your time on the delegate?
It was wonderful.
So we'll discuss that, consider it. It's a, it's a nice way to, um, expose yourself to a lot of the strong issues, um, that are presented across the state at the NISBA convention, so consider that. Um, I guess we, um, would have to try to pick a retreat date tonight, which is with Mr. Dr. Valleys, to reiterate, the eighth, the fifteenth, or the twenty-second, um, because we need to book a location for that retreat. Could I ask those board members to, to look at their... I'm open in, on Saturdays in September right now. Does anyone have anything booked at this time?
I'm open.
Uh, the eighth or the twenty-second work better for me.
Okay.
Although, if it's chosen for the fifteenth, I will attend.
The eighth or the twenty-second? Does anyone have a problem with the eighth or the twenty-second? Anyone? Okay, so I think we lean towards the twenty-second. We'll get school underway and get things out of the way, and then, okay, well, thank you for that. Thank you for that reminder. Okay, and please consider those, those, uh, committee, uh, positions for next meeting. And then lastly, we do have, we are finishing up, um, with our regular meeting, and we have to go into executive session, um, to discuss pending litigation. Um, I'd like, like to ask the board if they would have any, um, issue with inviting our new trustees, uh, Mrs. Cohen and Mrs. Simi Fetter into our executive session, so as to avoid repeating information?
You don't?
You don't? Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Um, okay, so with that, I'd like to, um, ask for a motion to go, go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? So we're moving into executive session. Ultimately, our meeting is done for this evening. Um, our next meeting, the reorg meeting, uh, is on July ninth at Central Avenue Building at seven P.M., with our regular session immediately to follow. Thank you for coming, everyone.
Okay.
No.